Good evening, I want to welcome you and call to order this meeting of the Forzal ISD Board of Trustees for this date, October the 3rd, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a form of board members present, myself, Dr. Joel Odom, Mr. Jason Verota, Ms. Elena Berlenga, Ms. Bonna Reid, Mr. Steven Shodrock, and Mr. Marshall Flear. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been newly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Let's stand together. I will lead us in prayer, and Mr. Flear, if you'll lead us in the process. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for all the blessings you've given us. Lord, you've been good to us all day long, and Lord, we're grateful for another breath of life. Lord, thank you for our school district, for those who lead us, Father. We thank you, Lord, for our teachers, our staff, administration, and, Father, most of all, our students. And, Father, that's what we're here for today, to just honor them, and just, Father, thank you for all of them, Father, that just, they bless our hearts every day, and, Lord, we're grateful for them. Thank you, Lord, for the protection that you've given us in our school district. Thank you, Lord, for your continued guidance and direction and mercy and grace to us. And, Lord, we give you praise to be able to be proud to say that we are part of a great school district. And, Lord, it's all because of you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the D.C., Texas, one state under God, one
Ms. Reid will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, and confidence. Our mission statement is, "FISD is committed to the development of innovative, lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success."
All right, and then Mr. Shodrock will recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, and strategic resource management.
Now, we'll do a round robin of the board reciting of the FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates, engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
I will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics. Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interest of the district as a whole. This month, for the code of ethics, we are highlighting integrity of character. I will refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and governance procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will needlessly harm the district if disclosed. Our good governance indicator for this month is, the board monitors strategic plan implementation and district's success in a formal, scheduled manner. Now, Mr. Gilstrap will have our superintendent. Oh, recognition, I'm sorry. We'll have recognition now for Forzal South Elementary.
So, board members, I would like to have Angela Garcia come up and introduce our teachers and students of the month of Forzal ISD representing South Elementary. Come on up here.
There you go.
There we go.
You can stand right beside him. There you go.
All right. All right, Dr. Odom and Board of Trustees, Dr. Gilstrap, I'm honored to stand before you this afternoon to recognize the Forzal ISD and Forzal South Elementary teacher and students of the month for October. I will begin by recognizing our male student of the month. Forzal South Elementary would like to recognize Blake Bravo as our male student of the month. He is joined here tonight by his parents, John and Melanie Bravo, and his siblings. Blake is an exceptional student who is always eager to engage in learning. He has participated in school activities, including the food drive and hygiene drive. Blake participates in a local baseball team, the Forzal Tigers, regularly, and loves all things baseball, including Ola Ryan and the Houston Astros. You can frequently find him in the batting cages, and he would like to have his own batting cage someday. His teachers describe him as a model student who helps his classmates with kindness and compassion. He is diligent and responsible and acts as a role model to other students, and he loves PE. Blake enjoys extracurricular activities, including fishing in Rockport, grilling for his dad, helping his grandma with yard work, and spending time with his friends and family watching movies. His family describes him as a great brother to his two siblings, and he loves to teach his little brother everything he knows. In the future, Blake plans to attend UTSA in Blake College Baseball, and one day would like to visit Mexico. Congratulations to our male student of the month, fifth grader Blake Bravo. Forzal South would also like to recognize Aubrey Lerma as our female student of the month. She is joined here tonight by her mother, Jackie Lerma, and stepfather, Chris Schralla, and her father and stepmother, Joey and Amber Lerma, as well as her grandmother and siblings. Aubrey is a well-rounded student. She enjoys helping other students and participating in the GT program. She is her homeroom representative for student council. Aubrey's favorite subjects are math and social studies. She wants to be a dermatologist when she grows up. When she isn't at school, she plays softball for the Wilson County Softball League, basketball for the Spurs League, and she also plays volleyball. Aubrey likes to read historical fiction, and mom says she is the best big sister to her little brother and two little sisters. Congratulations to our female student of the month, fifth grader Aubrey Lerma. Board, I would also like to take a moment to thank the members of my fifth grade team who wanted to be here tonight to help us celebrate this great honor of our students' families and with the Forzal community and my fifth grade team. All right, at this time, I'd like to also recognize our Forzal South teacher of the month, Ms. Brandy Shafer. I'm honored to present Brandy Shafer to you, who is one of our outstanding fifth grade teachers and fifth grade instructional facilitators. While Ms. Shafer doesn't prefer attention, and she is a self-reclaimed introvert, I am here to tell you that I believe she is the natural leader. As many of you know, our campus has grown, and our fifth grade team has too. Last year, we added a new section and a new teacher to our team in October, and Ms. Shafer took on that new teacher under her wing and helped her learn the ropes. In May, our fifth grade team learned of some new staff changes, and their grade level would be moving to the portables. As the natural leader, Ms. Shafer volunteered to sit in interviews over the summer, worked closely with me and her team to coordinate the move to the portables. And even more importantly, she went above and beyond this summer to make sure that her new team members had the opportunity to get to bond with each other. She hosted team get-togethers, she ordered team shirts, and she helped her team prepare the classrooms with a unifying theme of the Islanders. Mrs. Shafer has known since the time she was in the first grade that she wanted to be a teacher. She has served over forty years in education in one capacity or another. She has dedicated fourteen of those years at Forzal South Elementary as a certified teacher. Prior to that, she worked a few years in the tiny Tigers on site daycare at the Forzal High School, where she helped support student parents. Mrs. Shafer's passion for teaching never wavers. She goes above and beyond to make connections with her students, ensuring that they feel safe and comfortable in class to take risks and to ask questions. She believes that building connections is the most important goal, and that learning will naturally follow. Mrs. Shafer is the teacher who will combine classes if one of her team members is out to ensure that students get the highest quality of education, and even has been known to log in from home to check on her students in Google Classroom when she's out on leave. So, Mrs. Shafer's students know that she truly cares about them and their success and the success of her team. So, Board, I present to you Ms. Brandy Shafer.
So, first off, Ms. Shafer, I'd like to talk to you. Not only thank you, congratulations, but thank you for what you do. That's a long time to be teaching our kiddos.
It should have been thirty years. I'm not quite that old.
That's still a long time. Ms. Reid knows it's still a long time.
I never seen that day.
I look good for my age.
And the patience and compassion, and driving in here to see all these little cars zooming in front of me, and it was all your toe workers. That's pretty cool. Everybody gets that.
This is not a standalone job. I could not do it without my team.
That's right, and I'm glad you see that, because, but for what you do, thank you, but you're right. It's a whole coordination, a whole network of people, all of your whole team, so thank you so much from the bottom of hearts, teaching these kiddos, because these kiddos, they are so fine. So, Blake, Aubrey, I can't say congratulations enough. Y'all, listen to what y'all's accomplishments are, and y'all's schooling, and y'all's baseball, and softball, and all the stuff you do, but what really gets me is how you teach your little brother and your little sister, and how y'all pass it on to somebody. That's what we look for. That's what's really special to us. So, in growing up, listen to your teachers. Keep going, doing what you're doing. Listen to your mom and dad, and hopefully when you get into high school, come back here, and eventually, y'all get back into the world, and keep going, and you're gonna do great things. We're gonna be here too, so y'all make sure you keep in contact with your mom and dad and your teachers and the school, because we're very proud of what y'all are doing. So, congratulations. Thank you all.
All right, parents, go ahead.
Don't stand, don't.
Yeah, you can stand, it's okay.
Don't be scared, come on. All right. Thank you very much. You want to play something?
Back up. All right.
Oh, you should know me well.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much. You sure that's your kid? John. John, I'm sure that's your.
That's your kid.
You sure that's yours?
Six after mom.
Remember, I taught you guys.
That's the best part of our meetings every month, and we're so thankful that we can recognize our students and our teachers, because they do a wonderful job, and we do appreciate you. Now, we get to the exciting part of the meeting, and if you'd like to leave, you may, or you can stay for the exciting part, it's up to you. So, you go by there. Thank you so much. Ms. Hernandez, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next on the agenda, reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap will start us off with the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Odom. Board members, you were finding your fundraising through the Big Give and our gala, and raised approximately $120,000. So, that's phenomenal. That speaks to how much our community supports our district, supports our teachers and our kids, and so we want to thank our community and all those that gave, as well as the Education Foundation Board members for their hard work in putting that event on. And it's not just our board members of the foundation, it's their spouses, it's their families who give up time with them, and I know some of those spouses spend a lot of time getting ready and decorating for the gala, if you hadn't been to that. So, now, next thing is our teachers. It's time for our teachers and our staff to step up and start writing those grants. So, the grant application for Education Foundation grants is now open. They do plan on currently presenting those and awarding those grants in December. Those are for innovative instruction, innovative things that they need to be able to teach our students, and so this is their way of giving back. So, now that the Education Foundation's done such a great job of raising that money, they're ready to give it away to our students and our staff, so we need to make sure we're stepping up to do that. This past week, I did meet with a group of high school students called the Super Council. It's a group of twelve that I meet with throughout the year. I did that last year and beginning again this year. Really, it's just an opportunity to sit down and listen to those high school kids, see the district, see the campus through their eyes. They've got a wide array of experiences, all the way from kindergarten all the way up. We've got members on the council who just started in high school, so they've just gotten those experiences. But really, it's an opportunity for us to see what they're most proud of, because we want to build on that, and also to see the areas that they may feel like we need to get better at, and things we need to address. So, I will be continuing those throughout the year. Also, later this week, I'll be meeting with our teachers of the year from this past year. That's an opportunity, once again, to see and listen to, sit down and have a lunch with our teachers of the year, and really listen to what their concerns are, what they're most proud of, and an opportunity to see our district through their eyes as well. Work does continue as we begin the renovation and relocation of central office districts, departments. Several details are being addressed, and we will quickly begin that process as soon as Peanut Festival is open, or excuse me, is over. For coronation, they do use that building to prepare before they go over to the auditorium, and so, once this week is through, and we get through coronation, then you'll really see a lot of expedited processes of getting that other building cleaned out and cleaned up, so that we can start moving in there and get this building renovated. I will be meeting with both elementary campuses either this Friday or next Monday on Professional Development Days, just as an opportunity to speak to them. Obviously, as soon as we announced this last month in the open session during Super Term Report, it sparked a lot of questions really fast, and so that tells me that people are paying attention to our board meetings, which is good. But, they were very excited, they were very receptive, they understand what the needs are, but obviously, they had questions, and detailed questions about timelines and things like that. And not all of those details have been worked out, but we are in the process of getting that information together. I am going to be meeting with them to hopefully answer as many questions as I can and kind of make sure they feel comfortable with what's going on. The Finance Committee will meet on Monday, October the seventeenth, at 5:30, for kind of review where we are in our current fiscal year, as well as planning for future budgets and projects going into next fiscal year already. Due to the election on November the eighth, we'll need to reschedule our regular board meeting in order to meet the election calendar requirements. We're recommending that the regular November meeting be held on Tuesday, Tuesday, November the fifteenth, at 6:30. This will allow the board to canvass election results during a regular meeting without having a special meeting. So, if you want to recognize that, just to make sure everyone knows that we're gonna make that. There are a few other upcoming events. We are going to be hosting a district cross-country meet, again, putting our best foot forward, representing our community, our district. We do have trunk or treat at North Elementary, so, board members, we've got a booth set up for that. Also, Election Day and Veterans Program are both coming up. You'll also see some future agenda items that have been included in the report. Two other recognitions I'd like to thank and recognize today is National Custodians Day, so we did have lunch today with our custodial staff, just to recognize them and thank them for their hard work and their effort to keep our facilities ready for learning. One of the things that I talked about at convocation is, every employee of the district is a teacher. Every employee of the district is interacting with kids, and so, if you're interacting with kids, you're teaching them something. So, I talked to them again about that, to reinforce that. So, I really want to make sure we thank them and recognize them for hard work. Also, our principals, if you could stand up real quick. Come on. Go ahead. So, October is Principals Month, and so we want to recognize them and thank them for their hard work and dedication, that they provide the leadership on your campus. It goes unfaked a lot of times. You face a lot of difficult situations and questions and everything under the sun on your campus, and so we want to say thank you for all that you do to go above and beyond. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. I will now report on the continuing education hours for the Board of Trustees. Under State Board of Education rule, completing the required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. Per policy, VBD legal, as Board President, I'm required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and/or is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. I, Joel Odom, have exceeded the required continuing education training. Mr. Steven Shodrock has exceeded the required continuing education training. Mr. Marshall Flear has exceeded the required continuing education training. Ms. Bonna Reid has completed the required continuing education training. Mrs. Liana Martinez has completed the required continuing education training. Mr. Jason Verota is deficient in meeting the required continuing education training. Mrs. Elena Berlenga is also deficient in meeting the required continuing education training. And I wanted to say, as your Board President, I believe it's of utmost importance to complete your training hours yearly and in a timely fashion. This is a responsibility that I do not take lightly, and neither should either of you. We are all busy, and we know that, and listen, I'm very, very busy, you are too, and we have busy schedules. But it's not fair that some board members complete the hours required each year and some do not. I would like seeing, going forward, all board members complete the necessary hours that are recommended, and a great way, by the way, to complete these hours is by attending the annual Task Leadership Conference in San Antonio, and I'm hoping that if the date is known early enough, that we can all make plans to join this summer. I would love to see 100% attendance from our board, and the dates for the conference for next year, 2023, are June 15th and 16th. So, that should give plenty of time for everyone to give notice to, you know, your work and so forth and so on, and so we're grateful for that. This also provides a great opportunity, Board, for training, but also an opportunity to bond in unity with one another, which is very important. And I personally would like to see more opportunities for us as a board to get together throughout the coming year as well, so we can bond in unity, and it's very, very important that we do so. But I do appreciate each of you and all that you do and your service to our community, and I love you and I pray for you, and I'm thankful for each of you for all that you do for our community and for our district. God bless you. Now, Dr. Warner will report on the bilingual exception waiver.
Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap and board members. Today, we're going to do a quick, I know I just was here last month, but this is strictly on the bilingual ESL program, the program evaluation for 21-22. So, in your board packet, instead of showing this whole table of numbers and stuff, I had it included in there, so y'all can see the numbers. So, on the report, you'll see the student data for just the emergent bilinguals in 21-22, and...
Dr. Warner, real quick, is this it?
Yes. Yeah. And so, it'll have the three through eight STAR data and your five EOCs for the emergent bilinguals, the percentages, and then, based on your questions the last time, I made sure to put a comparison from the 21 to 22, so that you can see where we're gaining and where maybe we regressed a little bit. So, by requiring the presentation of the STAR data, we're trying to see that our emergent bilinguals are progressing in their English language proficiency, as well as the TELPASS. And the TELPASS is the test that is given to all emergent bilinguals annually, and it tests them in four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And so, based on that exam and the STAR data, whether or not students are exited from the program as an emergent bilingual, and that's our goal, is to have the kids exit being identified as an emergent bilingual. So, as I mentioned, when I said our goal is to exit students, it's called reclassification of students, so they're reclassified from being an emergent bilingual to being a non-emergent bilingual. This past year, in 21-22, we did not have any students that met the criteria, which includes the passing the STAR test and getting advanced high in all four domains of the TELPASS test. So, we had a lot of kids that came really close, but across the state, the speaking and particularly the speaking domain was the one that held students back from exiting the emergent bilingual program. So, part of our sacred language acquisition PD that we had in 21-22 included the dual-language teachers taking the reading academies, which is part of them, in Spanish. We had a good portion of the teachers that have completed it, and they have just a small handful that needs to take it this year. We also had dual-language professional learning communities. We met quarterly from both districts together, from north and south, gave the teachers a chance to plan together across the district and not just at their campuses. They also were provided training called the dictado writing to help improve our writing for our emergent bilinguals. We had staff that attended the bilingual ESL language conference, the bilingual ESL leadership PD series. We had teachers that attended summer PD for math, science. Our LOPE teachers, or Spanish teachers at our high school, went to some PD for sacred language acquisition and bilingual bound, and also in science. So, our teachers are going to trainings to improve their craft for the emergent bilinguals, and this was in 21-22. Now, last year, I presented to y'all that we had to file a bilingual and an exception and an ESL waiver, and so, we had it for pre-K last year for bilingual and ESL at the middle school for eighth grade. This year, I'm very excited that we are 100% in our bilingual certified teachers, so we do not have to do the exception. We do have to have the ESL waiver at the high school. It's been a struggle with the certifications, but we're working on that as well and have a plan in place for that. So, because we have to have the waiver, in 21-22, we now have the certified teacher in pre-K, and then we now have the ESL certified teacher at the middle school, so we're 100% there. So, we'll do the same thing to target the high school ESL certification this year. So, because we have the waiver in place, we do have to have a comprehensive professional development plan in place, so we have ESL review sessions that are available to teachers to get them certified, that help them get certified. We have teachers that are doing LPAC reviews, because they're the ones that help them to gain more knowledge on those four domains that the emergent bilinguals have to get advanced high on. We are continuing more strategies, our instructional strategies, for the dual-language teachers and ESL teachers at middle school and high school. We had an ALPS training for the administrators this summer, right before school started. We had a child drew symposium that we had eight teachers and staff members attend late this summer, and so, those are some of the PD that we have just to target our emergent bilinguals, so that we can improve their TELPASS scores and get more students required We have teachers that are doing LPAC reviews because they're the ones that help them to gain more knowledge on those four domains that the emergent bilinguals have to get advanced high on. We had, we are continuing more strategies, our instructional strategies for the dual-language teachers and ESL teachers at middle school and high school. We had an ALPS training for the administrators this summer, right before school started. We had a Title III symposium that we had eight teachers and staff members attend late this summer. And so those are some of the PD that we have just to target our emergent bilinguals so that we can improve their TELPASS scores and get more students reclassified out of our program, which is, again, the goal of the state. Any questions?
So the dual-language teachers, as of now, are we 100%? Is that correct?
100% bilingual certified, and we also have our bilingual interventions, which is, who is also certified.
So I know that's, that's a deficiency across the state. That's a tough one to fill. What do you attribute to? What change to get those people?
Starting this past January, the two principals, I'm astonished, my hardcore recruiting and going out and posting and the vacancies and hiring early. Like, I think we had most of the teachers hired probably before May, or pretty close, or June at the latest, which is really early, you know, we consider a lot of times.
We also increased the stipend.
And we increased the stipend. That's correct.
And we also...
A recommitment. We did a recommitment stipend for current staff.
Because so many times, you offer it to new hires, and your current ones will, where's mine? They'll start looking elsewhere, and so we offered...
And also, this year at the elementary, the teachers that partner up with the bilingual teacher and do the ESL portion for that group, we also have a little stipend for them as well. So, you know, every little bit helps. But I think the recruitment, the early recruitment and interviewing and stuff was a really, really big factor, in addition to the stipends.
We also made a little program adjustment for some of the upper elementaries to allow for that partner to occur.
Yeah. So... Any other questions?
So, Dr. Warner, I noticed, you know, our numbers are going in the right way, but we still have some work to do. Is that attributed to those positions not being filled properly?
No, not so much. I mean, if you look at the numbers, they're actually, they kind of correlate also with, with just our regular general pop scores. I believe that in the first row, it's our regular numbers of every, of all students, and then it's the emergent bilinguals. So you can kind of see the trend that everybody was kind of increasing.
Right, for the most part, but there's this couple that if...
There, there's some, and that's also why we're doing a more PD and trainings on instructional strategies, particularly for emergent bilinguals.
So feel like we're going to be able to make that up in the future?
I'm confident that we will.
Is there something else we might need or implement or something that you need from us? So I guess what we're asking is like, is there something else we need to do to, you know?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. I mean, if you feel it's going in the right direction, you know?
No, I'm very, very grateful. We, I go to Ms. Lindsay, and she's like, ah, I need some more money.
Okay.
So... I don't mind bilingual allotments. Yes, yes.
As long as it's working, I guess what we're...
Right, right. And so, and you know, the teachers are, have come to either their principals or myself, and it's like, hey, you know, we need these. So I go and look, and between the Title I budget, Title III budget, which is particularly for the emergent bilinguals, bilingual program, and then the bilingual allotment, we can generally find the funds to get what the teachers...
You had it in the right direction, though.
Yes, sir.
Just taking a while, so.
And then, the high school is the one that needs more help, or why is, I mean, because we are, we're so good and concentrated, then all of a sudden, these high school people didn't get as well educated?
No, they're, they're, the, to get that certification, it's a supplemental certification for the English, particularly for the English teachers. And so we just happen to have some of the upper-level English teachers that don't have it. And I know that I've worked with Dr. Cornell with the scheduling, and we looked, and she tried everything to see if we could find a creative way to get the kids with an ESL certified teacher, but...
The scheduling is a nightmare.
The secondary scheduling is very, very difficult. So, and some of the classes are extremely overloaded and stuff. But we're still trying to work different things out. Thank you. Thank y'all.
All right, Dr. Warner, thank you. Now, Dr. Wade will report on the HB3 goals.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and board members. House Bill 3 passed way many years ago, required the school board to adopt detailed plans to achieve goals in two areas, early childhood for math and reading, and then also for college career military readiness. The board adopted our five-year goals in March of 2020. Can you remember what happened then? It was the Monday after we came back from spring break with a COVID shutdown, limited sign. So tonight, we're going to report on progress of those goals, but please be aware, those goals were set pre-pandemic. So you're going to see some bright spots and some spots maybe not so bright, or we're still working on that. And we'll begin with Ms. Olivia Bailey, who gives our elementary coordinator with the early childhood goals.
Good evening. I just have really just two slides to present to you, but I'm very excited to present two slides. And same as Dr. and Wade said, our accountability factors in the students that meet the approaches, the MEETS and the MASTERS, but House Bill 3, we're just reporting on third grade and the MEETS level. And so that's what it means to me. That was actually taken last week, one of our kindergarten classrooms. They're wearing their supervisor back. So here's our reading for third grade, the STAR MEETS that you'll see in the target goal that was set back in 2020 was 42%, and in 2021, we were at 35, and in 2022, we hit 49. And so very, very proud to have not only met, but exceeded that goal and a gain of 14%. And that actually puts us tied with the state in terms of our gains. So very exciting news there. And we attribute a lot of those supports to, this year, we launched our third year of our cohort for the Texas Reading Academy. Year one, we had 48 staff members. Year two, we had 56, I believe. This year, we have less than 20. So what that means is almost 100% of our tender through fifth grade, oh, I'm sorry, pre-K through fifth grade teachers are certified in the Texas Reading Academy. So we're very proud of that accomplishment. And we're continuing to support our blended learning framework in reading. We rolled up our second grade this year, so now we have first through fourth grade that is doing blended learning. And we have our, we still have our STEM instruction happening for our tier three. That's our most struggling population. And we have an accelerated instruction happening in our fourth and fifth grade classes for the students who need that support. We're still continuing to focus on that direct systematic phonics instruction from the Reading Academy. We have literacy coaches from Region 20 that are working with a grade level at each elementary, and we're using our PLCs still to support training for our teachers and looking at data and how to best support our students. That's it. And here's math. So we know that as far as the content area nationally, math took the biggest hit as a result of COVID. So our target for 20, that was set in 2020, was 46%. And 2021, we were at 26. We had a gain in 2022 of 2%. And then the state of Texas had a gain of 12%. So we're a little bit less than the state of Texas, but still a gain nonetheless. So a couple of supports we have, we have contracted services with some mass specialists from Region 20 that are working with our teachers. We have interventions for our most struggling students happening. We have our dual, well, our dual language is actually for reading and math, and we just hired them in the woods, and we're very excited about that. Third grade specifically, we have a pilot program happening this year. It's a program called iReady, and it's targeting math specifically, and it's personalized instruction for our students, so we're very excited about that. And that's something we brought on specifically to address the math content. We have several of our teachers who have gone through the Region 20, that's a three, I should say, math academies, which they just relaunched this summer. And that's a three-day, very intensive training. And I went through the second grade one in wow. It was, it was an intense three days. And we have several of our staff members who are doing that. And then, of course, we're still utilizing our PLC framework for math as well. So that's it for House Bill 3, from elementary, anyway.
A question.
Yes, sir.
I know that in the, after COVID, so many of the teachers last year were talking about, the kids weren't paying attention, and they weren't turning their homework. Have you seen, or that, are they doing better at that? Or are you don't know?
Well, I mean, it's been only nine weeks in. And I mean, we've done several classroom walks and visits, and, I mean, when we're in the classrooms, I mean, the students are very well-engaged in their work, and they're, they're working hard. I think it was just an adjustment back to, to formal, to formalized schooling, and that, I mean, the classroom walks that we've been in, we've been very impressed with that.
That's good.
The engagement of the students.
From a third-grade level, is it tougher for a third grader to improve on a math than a reading?
There are some big changes. I mean, there's some big changes that happened from second into, into third, and so there's that adjustment. As far as why, why COVID hit that content specifically, I mean, I would be, I would be guessing, I would be saying, I'm sure that most parents, it's easy to read at home with your child, and it's easy to know the ABCs and those things that we as parents naturally do. Whereas math, I think, for a lot of our students nationally, that were at home during that time, math might not have been as much, as much of a focus for what was going on, you know, at home. We do have a big push, as we know, with the change in STAR testing. This year, a lot of writing and reading are happening across all contents, and so we'll see a shift in that. I taught second grade, and then I taught fourth grade, and I know there's a big, there's a big bridge that happens in between there, and there's no doubt about that. And it's the first year they're taking a formalized assessment, too, so I'm sure that that's part of it.
So I guess to piggyback on his, I know the percentages are down even across the state, and we're down, but, you know, the state also did 12%. Is there possibly, you see anything why we didn't have also something higher than a 2%? You know, is there anything we can, that sticks out, or not really, just the way it rolls?
Well, I know, you know, the one thing that I could probably speak to is our third grade in the, in following COVID, our third grade teens did go self-contained, and a lot of those teachers have been departmentalized, so we had teachers that taught, specifically RLA, and teachers that taught specifically math. And then that shift, just to keep students, you know, our six feet of separation and to keep students, we did go self-contained, and so we probably had some teachers that had some content gaps and maybe hadn't taught math as much, or some training in that area. And we have, we're now back to being departmentalized.
Hopefully, we catch back up, yeah, and mold again.
And then, you know, the big push is, has been the Texas Reading Academies, and now we're seeing the math academies coming out. So nationally, this is recognized, and hey, we need...
Recognize it. Push the math now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but math looks different than what we learned. The technology today...
Just a little bit, just a little bit.
You don't do it the old one. So it's very different. I'm like, you're doing what already? Wow.
It's also taught differently than what we learned it, much differently. And so that's a challenge as well.
Yes, very much so. And I, like I said, I attended the math academies, and I taught second grade. It's been a hot minute since I taught second grade from how I taught it to even, even now has changed dramatically. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you guys. Dr. Wade, you're going to go with the secondaries?
Brenda Jones, our secondary coordinator, was out unexpectedly today, so I am pinch hitting. So you might have some questions, and I'll try to answer them. You can go in there. I have a question.
It's been a while since I could...
I don't know. I mean, I didn't, I didn't raise the card.
Okay, so first of all, college career military readiness for CCMR. You heard me talk about this last month, is part of our accountability. So it is reported each year, but it is a delayed dataset. So for 2022, our dataset is on 2021 graduates. So just be aware, I'm going to talk about this year and the accountability, but it's a previous year's graduate set. So our students get a point if they meet any of the criteria that's up here on screen, and that's their college career military readiness point. Most of our points come from three areas. One is that TSI ready score. So do they meet a high enough score on TSI, the Texas Success Initiative? Am I right? I don't remember, but it's an entrance test to college. SAT or ACT counts for that. So are they scoring high enough that they do not have to take remedial classes when they go to college? They'll get a point for that. Dual credit courses, if they have nine hours in any dual credit, or three hours in math, or three hours in English Language Arts, they'll get a point for that. And then our industry-based certifications from our CTE program. Those are the three areas that we get most of the points for a student. And a student just needs one point, and they count it for us as a CCMR point. So here is a, whoops, sorry, I missed you, but you can... Sorry. Here is our annual accountability for the last couple of years. So you'll see the state was at 76% way back in 2020. This is 19 graduates, 2019 graduates.
Are you saying state, FISD?
FISD was 76. State was 73. So that year, we were able to count our armed forces enlistment through a self-report, and we could also account students who had a coherent sequence of CTE courses. That means they're in the same pathway of courses, not whether they got an industry-based certification or not. So that number, if we counted it today, would be 63%. So just...
Versus the 55 that we're seeing now?
Yes. So if you were trying to compare, and you look at 76, and you look at 55, you're like, whoa. But if we went back and calculated what it is right now, it would have been 63. So you also, the next year, when you look at 1920 graduates, well, what happened at the end of 19, 2020, was COVID. So we didn't have the CCMR armed forces enlistment, we didn't have the CTE coherent sequence, and we had students that did not return to us for a whole nine weeks. So a lot of them were waiting to get their industry base, take their exams, those kinds of things. So that was down for both the state and FISD. And then for 2022, this most recent year of accountability, that's 2021 graduates. So if you will recall, I know you don't want to hear this, but we had remote learning that year, and we started off with almost 50% of our students in remote learning, and only 70% of them came back. So by the end of the year, we had 30% of our students still in remote learning. So that, those are contributing factors for those numbers. So moving forward, where we are right now with 2022, for 23, 2023 accountability, our estimate, this is an estimate, anticipated, may be actually a little bit higher, is at 56%, which is a little bit higher than this year. Can't really go back and do much about that number because they've graduated. The number we can really begin to work on is right here. Our graduates this school year for our 2024 accountability is already at 54%. So we are working very hard to make sure that every student is looked at, to see if they have a point or not. In fact, I talked with Dr. Farnsworth today about this. So I want to review some of the strategies that we've put in place to help us get more points for students who don't have them. So the college career counselor, Ms. Ackley, has been working on communicating more about TSI assessment opportunities. She's created a group classroom for both parents and students, and has some kind of remind message that goes out to parents about signing up for taking that assessment, like, maybe I just didn't take the test. In addition, the high school is going to offer an SAT exam on a school day for all 11th and 12th graders who haven't taken it sometime in the spring. So again, trying to make sure they have that opportunity if that's, if that's going to meet their needs. They are also looking at hiring a contracted trained proctor to administer the TSI. That means that that proctor could, if they're a trained proctor, they can look to see how the kid scores and track their scores if they're improving. We have an English college prep course, and the high school is planning on offering a college prep math course in the spring. So that course, if a student did not meet the criteria for TSI on the test, they can take the course, and if they pass the course for both English and math, we get a point for them. So that's going to happen in the spring. So that's going to happen in the spring. And try to say, oh, we are also offering a college parent night, just making sure parents are aware of those dual credit programs. And we're also looking at our dual credit offerings. I'm going to show you some more data about that. For career ready, that's mostly the the industry-based certifications from our CTE programs. There's a few other criteria for that. There's a, they're scheduling a visit with some other districts about career technical education and how to increase ours. On October 7th and the 10th, our CTE teachers are going to be working hard to identify what industry-based certification exams that they can provide and what they themselves need to tool up on to make sure they can teach those. So we're offering more certifications in our CTE programs. We are also have become a certified testing location for culinary arts and health sciences. So our students don't have to go somewhere else to take those tests, and those are very popular courses. So should be able to get some points from that. And then we've been working with our special education teachers to make sure we're coding our students graduating under IEP appropriately, so that we can get a point for those students as well. Military readiness is based on enlistment on services. As I mentioned earlier, that has been waived the last couple of years, and we just found out last month that TEA has got a form that we can submit to a recruiter. And if the recruiter completes that, that there's an intent for the kid to enlist, we'll be able to count them. So that's going to be new coming up, that will not hit us until 2024, because again, our 23 graduates won't get accountability until 24. So that's a little bit about the House Bill three goals. I did want to provide you a little information about advanced academics, which relates mostly to our dual credit. So here's an overview of our, excuse me, I pressed again, she's fast, sorry. The dual credit overview for the last three years. And you can see our enrollment of students, the total course enrollments, how many credits were earned, and the success rate. In 2019, 20, we had five face-to-face dual credit teachers, two for English Language Arts, one for history, and one for economics and government. In 2020, 2021, we had two of those teachers retire. And so actually, two teachers retired and one teacher left us. So we had one teacher teaching English Language Arts, and then we've had one for this past year. So we have a lot of students, even though we offered the dual credit online and increased our offerings, they also want that face-to-face. So a teacher has to have a master's degree and be approved by the college to be able to teach it in a face-to-face setting. So that's one of the reasons we're seeing less students participating. The other area a student can earn a point for CCMR is advanced placement. And we no longer have advanced placement courses. We have honors courses, but students are still able to take the AP test if they like, would like to. You can see our success rate back in 2020 was pretty low, because most of those students are in the AP course because they can't get into a dual credit class because their TSI score is too low. So that's why we dropped promoting the AP, but it's still an option for some students if they would, if they need that. We also have UT on-ramps in physics and chemistry. So we had a little program change after we first launched it. That's why you saw a decline in the number of students participating. We were able to offer it last year, increased enrollment. Unfortunately, we lost the instructor who moved away from us, and so we were not able to offer on-ramps this school year. But we've had 62 college credits that were earned from on-ramps last year. And then lastly, we have Alamo Academies, which is students starting in their junior year that travel. We actually take them to Alamo Academies in the areas of aerospace, advanced technology and manufacturing, heavy equipment, information technology, security, and health professions. You can see the number of students averaging around 10. And we've been told that's probably a good number because you have to qualify to get in and have pretty good success rate with those students as well.
What's a qualification, Dr. Wade?
So they have to have the TSI criteria and then whatever for that particular program. And it's pretty competitive.
Yes, they're vetted, and I'm not sure it's on all the programs, but they go through interview process, and then it's it's a pretty robust process to get in. And once you're in, it's pretty rigorous.
So the kids go up there all day?
Sure.
They're not coming to our high school. They're at Alamo.
They're there for half the day.
Half day, yeah.
One of the students in our, in my super council is in the aerospace program there. He loves it. He speaks very highly of it, so.
And most of them, well, some of them, I think they they'll get an associate's degree when they when they finish two years. I talked to somebody that's in the information technology security, and she said, he's still going to have to take a few more classes to get his associate's degree, and it depends just on the kid, but it's a great opportunity.
Most of the ones that do get an associate's, typically they're short a few classes if you take those during the summer. Some kids work during the summer. Some of them, actually, this student did an internship over the summer. So they just didn't take those classes to finish off their associate's.
Seems like a great opportunity to be nice if we had a higher enrollment. Would be great.
I would have, I would love to see a higher enrollment in it, but as as Dr. Wade said, that's a pretty good number for a district our size, for our high school our size.
Highest number I've seen that we've had is 14, which was when I first got here. And it's based on criteria. I mean, and so when we talked to some other districts or the community, the Alamo Academies, they said, that's a really good number for a district our size to have some business. So just as an overview, here's an overview of the number of courses, the number of credits received, and our success rate for each of those areas. So the district for dual credit does pay the registration fee for all of our students. And then for students who are on free reduced lunch, they can apply for a scholarship from Coastal Dan, and the district pays another $50 for their tuition, even if they're not awarded a scholarship. And then for on-ramps and Alamo Academies, we also pay for tuition fees and textbooks. So the district is also supporting them financially in getting there. Okay, questions do you have? Did you do a job?
But it seems like there's a lot of great opportunities, and y'all were working on your messaging. So getting that messaging in multiple ways, not only to the student, but their parents to realize the opportunities are out there.
Yeah, the college career military readiness, as I said, it just takes one of those areas for the kid for us to get a point. And so the high school is super focused, I would say, this year on making sure, I think that's what I heard, is a conversation every week at their meetings, like who's not not had a point and what do we need to do to get them more points.
Ms. Ackley's on it.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Ackley's on it.
Ms. Ackley's on it as well as the administrative team.
The other thing I will say, you know, we do offer a lot of upper academics to all the students and to the point that some kids get overwhelmed. I've got too many options. I can't, which one, because I've, we've got all of these that we can take apart in. And so sometimes they get overwhelmed by their selections. So and the next thing you know, they do two or three here, and they, oh, we should have gone over there and done that one. But again, they're not, they're not picking their career. They're just trying to get through high school and get ready for whatever the life holds next.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or discussions on the items on the consent agenda?
Board members, I will point out that we do have another trip request. We've got two students that are going to be traveling to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis. Peyton Gerzombik, as you may know, is the Area 7 FFA president, and so she will be going and attending, representing the state FFA and a voting, as a voting member of the convention. And then Jack Tyler Billings has qualified through the DLO National Tractor Restoration Contest to travel up there and be a part of the convention with his project of restoring tractors. So that is a trip request that is on the consent agenda.
Okay, anyone who'd like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent.
And I second.
Mr. Bob Rock seconded it. All right. Any further discussion or questions? All in paper, let me know when you raise your hand.
That's a great accomplishment. Do we take an opportunity to put that in the the paper as well?
It will be in the paper and then also in a future board meeting, since he does reach the state or actually national level, will be bringing it forward for the board directly.
The next action item on the agenda is to consider approval of the district 2021, 22 financial audit. Is there a question?
Excuse me, Dr. Oram, Dr. Gilstrap, members of the board. This evening, as we do every year, we're required to, the board is required to annually accept or adopt our audit by November 27. This evening, I have Derek Walker with me from Coleman Horton and Company to present that audit to you guys.
You want to pinch it for me?
Yeah, no, I was up there.
I'm not much of a public speaker, so my apologies. Thank you for having me. My name is Derek Walker, and I'm with Coleman Horton Company, New Valley. Had a long trip here, two hours. Tried to do a little map, and I think I ended up on the wrong side of town, so I apologize for my lateness to the meeting. So I love clean audits. Y'all had a good audit. There weren't any findings, anything that we need to bring to y'all's attention. So my presentation is going to be short, which is something y'all probably like as well. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to go over my opinion letters and then over some fund balance numbers and then some general fund, vegetarian highlights and call it a day. If y'all have any questions, please stop me and let me know. So there's three audit opinion letters in here, and these are the only thing in this, I'm sorry, y'all have a.
Yes, sir.
So three audit opinions, one's on your actual financial statements. You're also required to have an audit if you receive any federal money. And you're also required to have an audit if you receive over 750 in federal money. So all three of those audit opinions were clean, also unmodified. This is the highest level of assurance that an auditor can give on a set of financial statements. So thank, you know, good job with the district in that regard. Go over a couple of numbers if you want to, pull the page 19. So page 19, in essence, is the district's profit and loss or its income statement for the year. And what we do is we show different funds in each column and break down those funds. Your total revenues, four lines from the top, so you can see your general fund had 36 million in revenue. Going on down that column, you can see your total expenditures in your general fund was And then the third line from the bottom of that column, your general fund, fund balance increased 1,320,641 dollars for the year, leaving the general fund with an ending fund balance of 11,435,923. Same song and dance with your debt service fund. You can see that net change in fund balance, that third line from the bottom, your general or your debt service fund increased 265,000 for the year, leaving it with an ending fund balance of 5,134. Now, we lump a bunch of these other funds because they're not major, they don't have enough revenue, they don't have enough assets, whatever, into one column. So those other funds include like your Title I, they include your food service, I believe there's a little capital projects left maybe in there. So those all get lumped in that one. We do detail those back in another statement in the back, if you want to look at the details of those. But for for this presentation, you can see that your other funds, they increased 817,000 during the year, had an increase in fund balance, leaving that with a 1,659,000 ending fund balance on that. So overall, for the district, total fund balance is at your far right column. They increased 2.4 million, leaving the district with a total ending fund balance of 18,229,000. That's a big number to you and I, but that's not a big number when it comes to school district, you know. And then not, you know, that's just two months' worth, you know, so. But people, yeah, people hear those big numbers, and they're like, well, that's a lot of money, but that's just three months' worth of operating. So as promised, one more schedule I'd like to go over with y'all is page 56. So this is your general fund fund balance. This is your main operating account, where your property taxes go in, where y'all spend most of your instructional salaries, et cetera. Just briefly, that first column is your original budget. That's what y'all normally approve before June 30 of each year. And then during the year, y'all have some budget amendments. And so that's where that second column comes in, that shows your amended, sorry, is y'all on the right page?
No.
Sorry, page 57?
57. You told us 57.
So once again, that first column is your original budget. That's when you first adopted that before the start of fiscal year. Second column is y'all had budget amendments during the year, each of those months, and that reflects your final budgeted amendments. Third column reflects your actual amounts. Those are your real numbers. And then the fourth column is your variance. That's the difference between your budget and your actual. And so I'm going to kind of stick to that that fourth column there. And looking at your total revenues, your total revenues came in 648,000 more than what y'all had anticipated. And you can see the difference there. Your local revenue was 436,000 more, that's your property taxes, that's your athletic gate receipts, that's your miscellaneous revenue, et cetera. And then state revenue is state revenue, that's your law from the state and federal federal revenue as well. So going down, y'all had no budget over expenditures in any of your funds. Once again, it was a clean audit, but your total expenses came in, that's three quarters of the way down, far right column, they came in 606,000 less than what was anticipated. I can keep on going until I. No, no, it was actually a very clean audit. I want to thank your staff, Ms. Gilstrap to Mrs. Engel. Did a great job. It takes a lot to get this audit. I mean, this is like a month-long process, or we're in the process of asking for stuff, and they're trying to get it to us. We show up on site for a couple of days, and then after that, it's about a week later or two. But they can do a great job getting us what we need. And I think the biggest deal is they want us out of their hair. So the quicker they get it to us, the quicker we get out of their hair. So but a great job. Like I said, I love these clean audits because I don't have to speak much, which is my favorite part. So if y'all have any questions, if y'all don't, our numbers on one of those letters, don't call me after five, you know, but y'all can call me during the day if y'all have any questions. Oh, one other thing, there is a certificate of board that I need.
And secretary.
Do you need it now or can you wait?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Appreciate it. Appreciate the work.
Board members, I would like to thank you for your your work on auditing and thank you for your opinion. Also, Ms. Engel and the business office, thank you for your efforts to make sure everything is is transparent and where it needs to be. And I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other questions, and administration recommends the board approve the 2021, 2022 audit as presented by Coleman Horton and Company.
I make a recommendation to accept, I make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Okay, this is a basic motion to accept the recommendation. I'll second. Any questions or discussion for? All in favor of accepting the motion, let me know when you raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Safe trip back.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next action item is to consider approval of the Tasby Policy Update 119 and EF Local presented by Dr. Gilstrap.
So board members included in the packet are documents presented as a part of the Tasby Policy Update 119 affecting local policies. In addition, one policy from our local policy review is being presented for approval. The Board Policy Committee met with the Cabinet on Monday, September 19 to review this update, as well as information that's been sent out over the past two months. and inform you of any, uh, changes. From the committee, there were no recommended changes. Uh, legal policies are also included. A list of those has been included in the packet. This, these do not require board action because they are legal policies. So listed below are the local policies that are presented for approval. Uh, you can see there are the ones listed in policy 119, uh, as well as local policy EF Local. Any questions? Hearing none. Administration recommends the board approve the addition, revision and deletion of local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Services for policy update 119 and the local policy review of policy EF Local as presented.
I so move.
All right. Ms. Reed makes the motion to accept the administration's recommendation. I have a second. Okay, Ms. Perling, seconded. Any other further questions or discussion? All in favor, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. The next action item is to consider approval of the purchase of buses. Mr. Schröder will come and present the report.
Good evening, board members. Transportation Department currently has a total of 53 buses in their fleet with models ranging from year 2006 to 2023. Uh, the district would like to upgrade our fleet with the purchase of two additional 2023 international buses through Longhorn Bus Sales. The buses will, will be able to transport 77 passengers equipped with air conditioning, camera surveillance, communication radios, the two-way communication radios, along with three-point seat belts. We received three quotes using the Tasby Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative. That's where we need the best bang for our buck. Uh, if the order is placed this week, should you guys approve, the estimate time of arrival is a minimum of 60 days up to 180 days. Uh, attached is a quote, I believe, in the board book, uh, from Longhorn Bus Sales through the Tasby Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative for your viewing. Uh, the cost of this purchase is 263,502 dollars plus an additional 800 for the buy board fee for a total of 264,302 dollars. Uh, the money for the purchase of the two buses was allocated in this year's line item budget.
How does that compare to the last buses we bought?
As far as the price?
Yes, sir.
It, and, and if they went up about 10,000 to 12,000, I can get you the exact quote, but per bus went up. And so the three quotes I got, I saw the same trend. So they're very competitive in nature with price increase. But yes, there's about 10,000 to 12,000 dollars additional from last year.
Yeah, because I thought the last ones we bought were somewhere in that 220 to 230.
Yes, sir. From what I remember. Any further questions, board members?
Is it brand new 2023, you say?
Yes, sir. Uh, they come, same thing, Cummins Diesel, Allison Transmission, uh, 80, no, 84-month warranty transmission.
84.
Pretty good, yes, sir. Is that seven years, eight years?
Yes, seven.
Have they already come with the cameras?
Yes, we have.
Well, that includes putting the camera.
You're just talking about two regular buses, but there's two special ed buses here also.
Just, just that you, India, if we were to go with four buses down the road, that's something I asked for a quote too for, uh, the special needs buses.
So right now it's just two, the two large buses.
These are Thomas buses or they?
These are Longhorn, but they're international. Yes, sir.
What's the, it says a four, 84 months on the transmission. What's the, is there any warranty, five-year warranty, six-month on the other bus? What do they do on that?
I've got it. It's, I know it isn't, I guess, no.
Oh, no, it's, it's a, did, did the Cummins engine was 60?
It's a five-year Cummins engine or 100,000 miles. Pretty normal.
Yep. Could you, uh, talk a little bit about a couple of buses that we want to try to rotate out?
Yes. Um, yep, we were looking at some of those too. And this is a list of all 53 buses we currently have. And so we are looking at some of our older buses. We currently have several buses that are in old transportation bus form. And if you ever see those, why are they sitting there? They're kind of seasonal, um, where they have no air conditioning. And so those are from 2006 to 2009 miles and they have high mileage. Uh, some of them we're looking at, I had Mary Aaron give me a list of some of those buses. They're upwards of 250 to right at 300,000 miles. So our plan is to put, you know, safer buses and build up our fleet with newer buses. When we do that, we want to subtract some of the older ones and build up our fleet with more reliable transportation. And so that, how will we do that? We'll look at that, uh, probably through auction. We have, if y'all recall, every year we have that women's online auction and we'll probably put those up for auction. Uh, will it be two buses, four buses, so forth? That'll remain to be seen, but that's something that I will prep you guys ahead of time and communicate in the know-it-all.
So until we just replace, we rotated some out with those?
We will. We haven't yet, but that is something we are planning to do. Because of no air conditioning, we only use them. They got such high mileage, we only use them for city routes in the fall and winter, uh, because we really don't need the air conditioner at that time.
About how many of those do we have? Five, six?
Four more.
Four to sit. Yep. We're going to need them.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Any further questions, board members? Okay. With that said, hearing none, administration recommends the board approve the purchase of two 2023 international buses through Longhorn Bus Sales as presented.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Ms. Perling makes the motion to accept the recommendation. Second, Mr. Schalbach, okay?
Mr. Schalbach.
Mr. Schalbach is on. And, uh, any, uh, further questions, discussion? All in favor, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries then six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Schröder. The next item is to consider approval of personnel presented by Mrs. Tisch. Here she comes.
So, hi, I was going to throw that. So, um, good evening, Dr. Odom, trustees and Dr. Gilstrap. So I'm here to present the district and campus personnel report for you tonight. It is the brightly colored yellow sheet, um, but it should be at your desk. So we do have six contracts that we're recommending for hiring. And I just want to note that only one of these is actually a new employee. Um, our bilingual interventionist position that Dr. Warner spoke about. So the other five with the asterisks, um, we're excited about because they've been with us since day one. Um, so if you remember in the spring, we approved the District of Innovation Plan, which allowed for the district to hire uncertified teachers, but that were highly qualified for the district's standards. So in the course of their employment, these five teachers have became certified. So now we get to offer them contracts. We're recommending to offer them contracts. So are there any questions?
So does that bring us up to 100% staff?
We have, we have a few openings, um, a lot of, uh, paraprofessional openings, um, but we are really close to being fully staffed on the professional side. Any other questions? Okay, so recommendation, so the administration recommends that you approve the contracts as presented.
Mr. President, I move to accept the administration recommendations.
Okay, Ms. Perling makes the motion. I have a second. Okay, Mr. Clear. Further questions or discussion? All in favor of accepting personnel report? Anyone opposed? Motion carries six to zero. If there are no further questions or any, um, reason for us to go into closed session, we have now concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business or?
Anyone have reason or need to go?
We have the need to go into session. All right. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 7:50 PM. Thank you so much.